Welcome to the Board of Education's August 5, 2024 Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Reverend Butler.
If you will, ma'am, I thought I could grab the clue starting with me this week.
Yes.
Please grab.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Horn will not be in attendance tonight due to out-of-town travel. She will be here Thursday, and we will be recognizing our outgoing members Thursday evening for their service to Knox County School and to our community. And I want to thank Dr. Butler for alerting us last month that the dates for our November meeting conflicts with the TSBA conference. So Ms. Cottney spoke with each of you at some point about your preference on rescheduling. So thank you for sharing your calendars with her. It appears that Monday evening works best with everyone's calendar that week. And so without objection, Superintendent Ryswick and I did discuss changing both meetings, but the work session and the regular session meeting to that Monday evening. So we will have a 30-minute recess in between. So I hope that works, seem to work with the majority of everybody. But I promise Reverend Butler that will be the only time that we do one meeting in the evening. And thank you to everyone in attendance tonight. Are there any requested changes to the agenda? Yes, Ms. Pike?
I'd like to request adding a libraries update from one of our staff members, just wherever he would feel appropriate, just with all of those changes that have happened in starting school.
Okay, do we want to add that to the work session one? Or are you talking about Thursday night or this evening?
This evening, just a small update.
Okay. Are there any other changes or objections? Yeah, right before, yeah, so item, we'll add item, we'll add that right after the Strategic Plan Committee update, before a discussion of the regular session, if that works. All right, do we have a motion then? Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplett, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Superintendent Ryswick.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some updates. As you know, this is a big week for Knox County Schools. At Principal's Institute, a couple of weeks ago, I told leaders that the days leading up to the new school year always feels like Friday night football to me. And I went on to tell them, as we move into year three of us doing these things, that I kind of feel like what a national championship coach feels like before the season starts. I really think we're going to do some great things this year. And you could sense that in the room from the principals, just their clarity of mission and what they've done for the work. So it's easy to get excited coming back to school when you have that feeling. So feel great about that. Our teachers and our school staff have been working hard to prepare for students who return on Thursday. And I know that this year is going to be great. Over the last two years, you know that we've been intentional about not just working hard, but doing the right work, keeping students at the center of every decision and remaining focused on our four priorities. And because of that, across the district, more than 50% of fourth graders scored proficient in ELA this year, well ahead of the state average. Third grade ELA proficiency rose to 43.5%, an increase of more than five percentage points over the last two years, the highest on record for Knox County Schools. Grades three through eight math have risen by 6.1% over the last two years. So all of those are about our teachers and our principals being intentional every day in the little decisions. We talk about that a lot. Just make the little decisions you make every day make the biggest movement, and they're doing a great job of that. And we think they're going to be even more focused this year. And not only are we seeing these powerful results, we're gaining momentum in the progress we're making to improve outcomes for every student. We've made historic and intentional investments in our people. We've established a strategic plan for Region Five schools that's already moving the needle for students. And we're seeing support and energy from the community more than ever before. I want to take a brief moment and share with you about some of the things we're seeing in those spaces. First, I want to thank you for approving the budget to the board that made our historic $41 million investment in our people possible. That's both with the salary scale as well as picking up some of the insurance to get to that dollar amount. While entering this school year back, we will start with the highest-paid KCS staff in the history of our organization. And that's definitely worth celebrating. My friend Paula's in the crowd, we talk about this often. Appreciate her help and their work in this too. But we know that investing in people is more than just salaries. When I became superintendent, we established a talent acquisition department within the business and talent division, a team dedicated to recruiting and retaining the highest-quality talent in our classrooms. I want to take a moment and recognize Ms. Himmelgarn and also Mr. Mosman, who's probably in the other room, right now, for the tremendous work they have done in this space. We set out knowing that traditional hires weren't going to be the way to do it. We recruited Mr. Mosman from Indianapolis to come down and share some ideas from then. He's done a great job coming up with lots of ideas. At our new teacher breakfast last week, we celebrated more than 400 new teachers joining the KCS team. One in particular, young lady, I'll say that, she liked it, stopped, waited for me to let me know that she was a 20-year special education veteran teacher from Oak Ridge and that she had been watching our district for the last couple of years. And we'd finally gotten the pay that could be competitive what she was making there. And she came home and was thrilled to be an Agent Burnett Special Education teacher. Really appreciate her taking time to talk to us about that. As of July 31, which was last Friday, vacancies were down 76% compared to this time last year. 76 of our schools are fully staffed with certified positions. The district as a whole is 99.5% staffed for certified positions. We have no openings in ELA. We have only 11 full-time classroom teaching positions remaining open across the entire district. This time last year, we had 89, if you're looking for a comparison. As educators, we know that classrooms are where the magic happens and why it's so critical that we invest and now have teachers in every classroom. I think about just that, you know, we've done a lot to focus on the right work the last two years. But we know the last two years, we started school and we've had these vacancies. We've had teaching assistants cover, we've had teachers on their plans. The fact that we're starting nearly fully staffed means that certified teachers will be in every classroom across the board. And that's impressive, this is in my notes, but I just know this because we continue to look at Region Five. Region Five is 95% staffed at this point, to 13 schools. That's amazing. Again, makes a huge difference when you have, trying to make a difference in populations of kids to make the growth they need. I really think the impact of closing these vacancies, retaining teachers, and bringing high-qualified new teachers into our classrooms cannot be overstated. In the midst of this global shortage, I want our families to know that KCS is staffed and ready to welcome our more than 60,000 students back to the classroom on Thursday. Last week also, Region Five schools kicked off their school year with the first-ever educator summit. What was so special about that was this was an idea that came from our Region Five Teacher Council, wanting a day just to pull away and work on skills that they could share across the 13 schools. So it was a day of professional development designed and led by the lead educators of Region Five. Just as a reminder, Region Five Strategic Plan was created to ensure every student is held to the same academic rigorous standards as students across the district. At the educator summit, we took time to review year-one objectives in the Region Five plan and to reflect what's at stake. I remember Dr. Murphy was up and he was talking through the Region Five goals, and he pulled this slide up and everyone was encouraged. In Region Five, we fell for the year-one marks. We fell just seven students short of our third-grade reading proficiency goal for year one in the Region Five plan. We fell 66 students short of the eighth-grade goal we had for math for year one. So to be clear, we are making progress in Region Five schools, and I'm proud of the work our educators and students have done. But we know that these are pivotal benchmarks for students, and we can't afford to lose sight of the ambitious goals that we establish with the Region Five community. As superintendent, I know that we have the right team in the schools and the right leaders in Region Five to take care of this work, to support every student in their strong future, both in school and beyond. Finally, I want to recognize the community for the effort and continued support they have for Knox County Schools. As many of you know, Knox County Mayor Glenn Jacobs hosts an annual school supply slam at Chilhawley Park, and he did on July 26. I was honored once again, it was hot. But I was honored once again, everything I do with this man is always hot. We did the press conference today, the graduations, but I do like the mayor. I was honored to join Mayor Jacobs in distributing more than 2,500 back-to-school supply bags for local families and to see many familiar faces along the way. Last week, I was honored to attend the Knox Education Foundation with many of the board members who were there, our board members who were there too, their back-to-school breakfast. The event served as an opportunity to share our vision for the 24-25 school year with a broad range of partners and to recognize Knox County Education Foundation for their tremendous work they do in catalyzing support for the district. And just this morning, we hosted our Safe Schools, Safe Students Summit alongside KCS School Security Chief Jason Perryard, Knox County Sheriff Tom Spangler, and Knoxville Police Department Paul Noel. As I shared at that event, keeping students safe is our most important responsibility and one that I do not take lightly. We are continuing to invest in safety strategies we know will work to protect our students through intentional training, campus infrastructure, and partnerships with local law enforcement. And I want to thank the families of Knox County for continuing to entrust us with their students for their safe learning environments. I know that's a lot of information, but this is some of the amazing work that our team is doing and how excited we are for the next year. Madam Chair, that concludes my report, but I would like to, if I could, ask Dr. Brown real quick if he could update us on one thing. So at this point, I'd like to invite Dr. Brown, who is Assistant Superintendent of Student Success, to give us a brief update on our special education progress.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd be glad to do that. I'm excited about the direction of our special ed department. You will notice tonight on your agenda, item 9A under contr-
Kotny spoke with each of you at some point about your preference on rescheduling. So, thank you for sharing your calendars with her. It appears that Monday evening works best with everyone's calendar that week. And so, without objection, Superintendent Ryswick and I did discuss changing both meetings, but the work session and the regular session meeting to that Monday evening. So, we will have a 30-minute recess in between. So, I hope that works, seem to work with the majority of everybody. But I promise Reverend Butler, that will be the only time that we do one meeting in the evening. And thank you to everyone in attendance tonight. Are there any requested changes to the agenda? Yes, Ms. Pike?
I'd like to request adding a libraries update from one of our staff members, just wherever he would feel appropriate, just with all of those changes that have happened in starting school.
Do we have somebody here that can do?
Okay. Do we want to add that to the work session one? Or are you talking about Thursday night or this evening?
Oh, this evening. Just a small update.
Okay. Are there any other changes or objections? Yeah, right before, yeah. So, item, we'll add item, we'll add that right after the Strategic Plan Committee update, before a discussion of the regular session, if that works. All right. Do we have a motion then? Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplet, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Superintendent Ryswick.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some updates. As you know, this is a big week for Knox County Schools. At Principal's Institute, a couple of weeks ago, I told leaders that the days leading up to the new school year always feels like Friday night football to me. And I went on to tell them, as we move into year three of us doing these things, that I kind of feel like what a national championship coach feels like before the season starts, I really think we're going to do some great things this year. And you could sense that in the room from the principals, just their clarity of mission and what they've done for the work. So, it's easy to get excited coming back to school when you have that feeling. So, feel great about that. Our teachers and our school staff have been working hard to prepare for students who return on Thursday, and I know that this year is going to be great. Over the last two years, you know that we've been intentional about not just working hard, but doing the right work, keeping students at the center of every decision and remaining focused on our four priorities. And because of that, across the district, more than 50% of 4th graders scored proficient in ELA this year, well ahead of the state average. 3rd grade ELA proficiency rose to 43.5%, an increase of more than five percentage points over the last two years, the highest on record for Knox County Schools. Grades 3 through 8 math have risen by 6.1% over the last two years. So, all of those are about our teachers and our principals being intentional every day in the little decisions. We talk about that a lot. Just make the little decisions you make every day, make the biggest movement, and they're doing a great job of that. And we think they're going to be even more focused this year. And not only are we seeing these powerful results, we're gaining momentum in the progress we're making to improve outcomes for every student. We've made historic and intentional investments in our people. We've established a strategic plan for Region 5 schools that's already moving the needle for students, and we're seeing support and energy from the community more than ever before. I want to take a brief moment and share with you about some of the things we're seeing in those spaces. First, I want to thank you for approving the budget to the board that made our historic $41 million investment in our people possible. That's both with the salary scale as well as picking up some of the insurance to get to that dollar amount. While entering this school year back, we will start with the highest-paid KCS staff in the history of our organization, and that's definitely worth celebrating. My friend Paula's in the crowd. We talk about this often. Appreciate her help and their work in this, too. But we know that investing in people is more than just salaries. When I became superintendent, we established a talent acquisition department within the business and talent division, a team dedicated to recruiting and retaining the highest-quality talent in our classrooms. I want to take a moment and recognize Ms. Himmelgarn and also Mr. Mosman, who's probably in the other room, right now, for the tremendous work they have done in this space. We set out knowing that traditional hires weren't going to be the way to do it. We recruited Mr. Mosman from Indianapolis to come down and share some ideas from then. He's done a great job coming up with lots of ideas. At our new teacher breakfast last week, we celebrated more than 400 new teachers joining the KCS team. One in particular, young lady, I'll say that, she'll like that, stopped, waited for me to let me know that she was a 20-year special education veteran teacher from Oak Ridge and that she had been watching our district for the last couple of years, and we'd finally gotten the pay that could be competitive with what she was making there, and she came home and was thrilled to be an Agent Rennett Special Education teacher. Really appreciate her taking time to talk to us about that. As of July 31st, which was last Friday, vacancies were down 76% compared to this time last year. 76 of our schools are fully staffed with certified positions. The district as a whole is 99.5% staffed for certified positions. We have no openings in ELA. We have only 11 full-time classroom teaching positions remaining open across the entire district. This time last year, we had 89, if you're looking for a comparison. As educators, we know that classrooms are where the magic happens and why it's so critical that we invest and now have teachers in every classroom. I think about just that. You know, we've done a lot to focus on the right work the last two years, but we know year, the last two years, we started school and we've had these vacancies, or we've had teaching assistants cover, or we've had teachers on their plans. The fact that we're starting nearly fully staffed means that certified teachers will be in every classroom across the board, and that's impressive. This is in my notes, but I just know this because we continue to look at Region 5. Region 5 is 95% staffed at this point, to 13 schools. That's amazing. Again, makes a huge difference when you have, trying to make a difference in populations of kids to make the growth they need. I really think the impact of closing these vacancies, retaining teachers, and bringing high-qualified new teachers into our classrooms cannot be overstated. In the midst of this global shortage, I want our families to know that KCS is staffed and ready to welcome our more than 60,000 students back to the classroom on Thursday. Last week also, Region 5 schools kicked off their school year with the first-ever educator summit. What was so special about that was this was an idea that came from our Region 5 Teacher Council, wanting a day just to pull away and work on skills that they could share across the 13 schools. So, it was a day of professional development designed and led by the lead educators of Region 5. Just as a reminder, Region 5 Strategic Plan was created to ensure every student is held to the same academic rigorous standards as students across the district. At the educator summit, we took time to review year-one objectives in the Region 5 plan and to reflect what's at stake. I remember Dr. Murphy was up, and he was talking through the Region 5 goals, and he pulled this slide up, and everyone was encouraged. In Region 5, we fell for the year-one marks. We fell just seven students short of our 3rd grade reading proficiency goal for year one in the Region 5 plan. We fell 66 students short of the 8th grade goal we had for math for year one. So, to be clear, we are making progress in Region 5 schools, and I'm proud of the work our educators and students have done, but we know that these are pivotal benchmarks for students, and we can't afford to lose sight of the ambitious goals that we establish with the Region 5 community. As superintendent, I know that we have the right team in the schools and the right leaders in Region 5 to take care of this work, to support every student in their strong future, both in school and beyond. Finally, I want to recognize the community for the effort and continued support they have for Knox County Schools. As many of you know, Knox County Mayor Glenn Jacobs hosts an annual School Supply Slam at Chilhawley Park, and he did on July 26th. I was honored once again, it was hot, but I was honored once again. Everything I do with this man is always hot. We did the press conference today, the graduations, but I do like the mayor. I was honored to join Mayor Jacobs in distributing more than 2,500 back-to-school supply bags for local families and to see many familiar faces along the way. Last week, I was honored to attend the Knox Education Foundation with many of the board members who were there, our board members who were there, too, their back-to-school breakfast. The event served as an opportunity to share our vision for the 24-25 school year with a broad range of partners and to recognize Knox County Education Foundation for the tremendous work they do in catalyzing support for the district. And just this morning, we hosted our Safe Schools, Safe Students Summit alongside KCS School Security Chief Jason Perryard, Knox County Sheriff Tom Spangler, and Knoxville Police Department Paul Noel. As I shared at that event, keeping students safe is our most important responsibility and one that I do not take lightly. We are continuing to invest in safety strategies we know will work to protect our students through intentional training, campus infrastructure, and partnerships with local law enforcement. And I want to thank the families of Knox County for continuing to entrust us with their students for their safe learning environments. I know that's a lot of information, but this is some of the amazing work that our team is doing and how excited we are for the next year. Madam Chair, that concludes my report, but I would like to, if I could, ask Dr. Brown real quick if he could update us on one thing. So, at this point, I'd like to invite Dr. Brown, who is Assistant Superintendent of Student Success, to give us a brief update on our special education progress.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd be glad to do that. I'm excited about the direction of our special ed department. You will notice tonight on your agenda, Item 9A under contracts, with board approval, we will begin the work of doing an analysis of our special education department this year. If you look in the contract produced by procurement, there will be four phases of work. We'll start with a comprehensive pre-assessment of the current special education system, design structure, and established processes to identify specific tasks to be included in the project proposal. So, we'll look at what are the needs, what have we identified. Secondly, Phase 2 will be to identify an alignment between the structural supports and the continuum of services available to students with disabilities and our district's strategic plan, how we move forward together. The third step will be for PCG to provide recommendations for changes and actionable evidence-based, and will improve efficiency and effectiveness of the services for Knox County Schools, students receiving special ed services and their families. And then finally, we will work in partnership to integrate those recommendations into a three-to-five-year strategic plan for special education programming. Public Consulting Group will be able to analyze and manage our existing data, including the information that was gathered from our first phase of the Student Success deep dive. That includes our family focus groups, the educator portal that was created, the task force work, and also the board's resolution that was adopted last fall. And from there, obviously, we will develop our comprehensive three-to-five-year strategic plan aimed at improving special ed services and support to our students and families. So, with board approval, our next steps will be to connect PCG with myself and the Special Ed Council to begin developing an understanding of what it is we want to accomplish through this work. We will then share data and findings from our Student Success deep dive and all those things I just mentioned, the task force recommendations, the board resolution, and the educator portals. And then we will generate a comprehensive understanding of where we are and where we want to go. So, again, I'm excited to see where we're going to go and how we can continually improve in the world of special education. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's awesome. Thank you. I'm looking forward to all that work. And you're right, that was a long update, but we know school is starting, right? So, it's definitely back to school time. Well, it's you again.
So, I think this is the last time you have to hear from me tonight, so that's a good thing. So, thank you, Madam Chair. You may have heard that we're in the middle of transitioning to a new salary schedule. So, in doing so, I just want to say upfront, you know, it's been a challenging process. It is a big deal. You know, I think as we reflect on it, we now realize why this doesn't happen often, and it takes decades. It's kind of like a board trying to rezone sometimes, right? You don't do it, you don't do it that often because it's a big deal. So, I just want to say, I applaud our team. You know, we knew this work was going to be hard. It's hard to go into, you know, 25 to 30 years of an existing structure that basically has kind of been held together with duct tape. And to be able to look at that, have the courage to go find a third party to come make sure that we're staying in line with best practices, not only to take care of that situation, to get folks to the value that they deserve to be at, but also to put stakes in the future of where we want to go and ensure that we keep folks. And it's great that when you don't always get, you know, kind of that immediate feedback, but the fact that, you know, where we are with our staffing right now and our vacancy numbers dropped, I think is proving that it was a very wise investment. But I think you've noticed as we go into year three that, you know, we're not an administration that shies away of tough decisions if they're the right decisions. And investing in our people and our classes, our teachers in our classroom every day, we said time and time again, is our best investment. And so, I appreciate you all doing part of that. And a second, you're going to hear from our business and talent team. They're going to update you on where we are in this process. And I just want to say, I appreciate Ms. Himmelgarn and her division taking this on. Mr. Bolton's been the project lead for this. We'll be hearing a lot from him tonight as we get into some of the details of where those things are. And just want to say again, thank you to the board. This is the highest-paid staff we've ever started a school year with, and that's because of the vote that you all made last spring. So, thank you for that. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Himmelgarn.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ryswick, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words before turning it over to Mr. Bolton for an implementation update. We knew when we asked you a few months ago to make this transition that making a transition of this size in a short amount of time was an ambitious goal, but we also knew that it was the right work. We've learned a lot through the process, and if we had it to do over again, we would make some improvements to the process. Mr. Bolton's going to talk a little bit about those in a minute. We know that decisions like these are about people, not just spreadsheets and market value, and while the majority of the people in the district, I think, view the transition positively, we know that there's a small percentage that experienced frustrations throughout the transition, and even a small percentage in a district our size is a lot of people. And we, there's a few things that we could have done better to try to eliminate some of those frustrations. We could have done a better job on the front end of explaining the purpose behind this. We're moving from, like Dr. Ryswick said, a very complex salary schedule to one that's a lot more transparent and user-friendly, but I don't think that we focused enough just on how salaries were made under the previous salary schedule. And then we could have done a little bit better about making sure that people knew that the percentage increase they experienced is not a reflection of their work. We know that every position in KCS is important to the mission of KCS, but what we learned through Evergreen's study is that some of those were closer to market value than others already. So, that's why there were differences in percentage increases. Changes to compensation are deeply personal, and we don't want anyone to be disappointed. But we also have a responsibility to create a system that respects the taxpayers that fund our district, too, which is part of the reason that we engaged a third-party, Evergreen. I do believe that our new compensation system is both more clear and puts us in a better competitive district with other counties, comparable districts around us. The teams worked hard to ensure that not only everyone's paid this year, but paid more than they were last year. And as Mr. Bolton will share, if the board takes action on Thursday, that will increase just a little bit more, the pay for some of our employees. So, with that, I think I will turn it over to Mr. Bolton. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Bolton.
Thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chair, board members. Few things, let me walk through the process of the implementation, and this was a very, very, very heavy lift. I don't know if you recall in the conversation that Evergreen told us, they said, "Oh, wow, you're doing it in one year?" We said, "Yeah, we're doing it in three months." So, their recommendation, we are the first institution that has done that in a one-year span. But I just want to remind you of the purpose of this and take just a minute to kind of set right there the objectives of this salary study. We wanted to identify the best practices nationally, to determine and leverage those strategies to be able to enhance our employee recruitment and retention. And I think, as Dr. Ryswick mentioned, with our numbers down in terms of open positions, it seems like it's reaping some benefits early on. But we also wanted to look internally. We wanted to create, look across the consistency of our agency, in particular, job classifications and their compensation throughout the district. We also wanted to determine market value. I'm going to take a few minutes to kind of walk through exactly what market value is and try to hone in on that, and then to simplify the overall existing salary structure. That's what our aim was from the get-go with this process. So, let's look at market value. You know, what is market value? Market value is that average typical salary of a specific role within a group of similar school districts. You know, what we're not talking about is the evaluation or the valuation of a specific person. That's not what it is. It's how that role is paid, or a similar role is paid across multiple districts and looking at an average. We actually looked at 19 different school districts. We solicited 20, and 19 responded, so we had a great sample. And we looked at the various job classes across that district, made some kind of, or Evergreen made considerations for those and grouped them together and then made a comparison to our job classes in our district. And so, when we think about it, market value is actually not an arbitrary number. There is objective value in what we found in that. And the overall purpose of market value is to provide a fair and competitive compensation as we look to be competitive in the market for talent. That's what we want to do in retaining our talent as well. And what it's not, what market value is not, it's not an evaluation of an employee's performance. So, that is what market value is. I want to kind of give you just a couple of examples that we've noticed. We've noticed a lot of people leaving positions to go to the classroom, and I think that's a good thing. We had a person that left our office and went back into the classroom. We also have had that same similar situation happen in other departments, where they've gone back into the classroom, and we think that's important. Another thing I want to, example, I had the pleasure of offering a job to an assistant principal in a neighboring county. And in offering that job to that person as he came to us, he was ecstatic. He's getting a $9,000 pay raise for working a month contract less than what he was working in the other school district. And so, we feel comfortable about that. That allows us to recruit that talent the way that we want to. This is a picture of what, this is just like a little snippet of what we saw with that research, time to give you an idea of what you'll see. So, of course, secretaries, this was an example, all 19 school districts responded to secretary. You'll see what the midpoint, the hourly minimum is. You'll see the hourly maximum, and you'll see the hourly midpoint, and you'll see how that aligns specifically with our grade band 109, which is where those positions were actually placed. So, let's talk about the phases that we've had. We had that external assessment that Evergreen did, performed for us. It included staff engagement. It looked at job assessment of specific job categories. We know there's a lot of categories across our district that we've got a pretty good handle on, matches real closely with that of other districts, but there are some unique things of our school district that we looked at in that internal, that external assessment. We looked at those, not, Evergreen looked at those 19 school districts and then reported out some findings to us. And that, you know, the process of moving in and the transition of that, we looked at what their solution file had. We made the implementation, made sure that the data was clean, and implemented that into our new salary schedules. We looked at that for our, the purpose of the budget and making that request to you and felt comfortable with those numbers in doing so, and were gracious that you all granted approval to move forward. We're currently in Phase 3 of this process. We have migrated all new schedules, and we have run one payroll for year-long. That's 255 and 260 employees on the July payroll. The rest of our employees will get their first new paycheck on August the 1st. We got a lot of, or I'm sorry, on August the 23rd this year in the August paycheck. I know that's a lot of questions that people have had. They, when the, the, what we call early July check hit from our 200-day contract, folks, they said, "I didn't get my, my salary was not, was not any different." And that's true. The August paycheck will be the first paycheck for this fiscal year for a lot of school-based, for our school-based staff. And Phase 4 is where we're going to be for a good while and looking at that continuous improvement of things that we need to look at in terms of adjustments that need to be made. And we have put together a salary committee to look at that compensation strategy for the district going forward and what it looks like at large. This is kind of an overall timeline of the implementation that we had going on, little snap, snapshots of months and times, the things that we've done at various points across the aisle. And as you can see, June and July kind of came together as busy times for the purpose of going through that process and implementing that exchange process. You know, we had one goal, and we had three months. I said that earlier, that the Evergreen was surprised because most, most school systems, even school systems smaller than ours, take three years to implement. So, why did we implement that in one year? It was, you know, as we looked through and weigh the pros and cons of that, it gave us that one opportunity to get all employees at market value at one time. And I think that was important when we looked through that. It gave us, we didn't have to prioritize certain job classes as we looked if we were going to do it over more than one year. And it effectively addressed any compression that currently exists between job classes and alignment there. And then, the ability to look into the future and pay down that debt and be able to afford it at one time made that implementation an opportune time to do that. And so, that was why, one goal in three months to do it. So, we're in the implementation kind of phase, and in that, I want to just point out a few things because I want us to actually look at the raw numbers. 100% of our employees received an increase. Everyone received an increase. Some were larger than others. 87.8% of our employees received 4% or more. So, that $28 million that we said at the beginning was dedicated to teachers, and it was about a 10% increase in salaries for teachers in our classrooms. It was significant, absolutely significant. Here, we can see the benefits of that. We can see that 76, 76 of our schools are actually fully, they're fully staffed. That's certified and classified. We can see that every school is staffed over 85%, but I want you to draw to one number of that red box. If you look at the red boxes compared to the blue box, the red box would be where we were this time last year. The blue box is where we are this time, this year. A significant reduction in those positions when we look at those as a whole. I also want to say this. I looked back at our vacancy numbers, and I went all the way, you know, we, everybody in public education indexes the COVID year as a seminal event. So, if we look at that particular point in time, I went back to 2019, pre-COVID, and I said, "What did our numbers look like going into this time of year in 2019?" And we had 67 total certified vacancies when the kids entered the school building. The school doesn't start with students until the 8th, and we're at 36 vacancies now. So, we've nearly cut that in half from pre-COVID numbers. So, let's look at the Google form. There's been a lot of information that's provided. I'm sure, I know that you all have heard a lot about the Google form, but that was our attempt to try to engage in an interactive kind of process between our staff to identify trends, ask for, you know, for, the purpose was for them to have the opportunity to ask for clarification and identify concerns. As you can see, we had an overwhelming number of submissions to that Google form, 1,793 submissions to the Google form. And basically, we could boil that down into four themes, and you could see those there. Pay and step was a concern that a lot of people had, job roles, and the recognition, the recognition of previous experience. So, let me pause for a second as I look at the top-right part of that slide. We marked those submissions resolved, and I wanted to clarify what we mean by a resolution. A resolution to us was that the employee was transitioned to the appropriate grade and to the appropriate step with the fidelity of the process. So, that to us is resolved. Sometimes to the person on the other side, they, that was not resolved to them. So, we understand, we recognize that that is going to exist, and we're going to work to try to, while, give some kind of clarity to that little bit of dissonance that exists there, but that is important for me to say, well, we mentioned resolved. We mentioned that the fidelity of the process was followed, and it was, it was a correct and rightfully completed for that particular person. But, so when we look at that process, when we sent out a lot of information, the only way that we could handle that volume of responses was to package similar situations together, address them in a bulk way, and submit a response back to them in a formed manner. To a lot of people, that was kind of the process and the way that they got. So, as we, as we look at our progress as of July 31st, we had roughly about 1,702 that we marked resolved, and there's still 91 that we're working, working with in, at this particular, at this particular time. We will, though, have those 91 resolved in time for board meeting. And let me say this, I want to emphasize this because anything that we see in that process, we will correct, and we will process, we will correct and we will retro pay back. So, I want people to understand that we will do everything that we can to make it right by people. And so, when I'm talking about these Google responses, we had to make sure, and this was, this was, you know, hindsight's 2020, we can, we can armchair quarterback all day, but my number one goal was that everybody received a paycheck. Because I understand the pain that it is to not know what you're going to get paid, but it would be even greater to know that you didn't receive a paycheck. So, our team has worked hard, and we've elevated that as a priority, priority to make sure that folks got paid, and they got paid as close to correct as possible, knowing that there could be errors, there may be errors, and we will correct those errors and make them right, but not getting a paycheck was just something that we were not going to stand for through this process. So, lessons learned. I, I think that it would have been better if we had done a better job of descri, of defining grade and step. I think a lot of people, as they communicated that information, we weren't necessarily clear in what we meant by grade and step, and I think we could have done a better job of communicating that on the front end. And, you know, for, for your edification, grade bands are, those are the, the things that run vertically, and those positions are paired to certain grade bands to reflect the market, market value of those positions, which is different than the steps. The steps run horizontally across the salary schedule, and they are specifically assigned to people. So, you've got, again, grade bands assigned to positions, steps assigned to people. And so, when we look at that process, as we transitioned folks from that old scale onto the new scale, you may recall the process that we went through to do that was how long were they in the position as of FY '24, and what was their current salary? And we slotted them into the scale at the next highest, whichever was the highest step there, and that was the transition to the scale. We should have done a better job of really defining exactly what that meant, because that was very confusing for a lot of our folks. So, I wanted to, to take a, a snapshot of what it used to look like, because it was very convoluted, and I, you know, I, after talking to our consultants with Evergreen, I dubbed them an honorary PhD for at least understanding the scales that we had, because it's, it's amazing to try to understand that. So, I wanted to put together a simple explanation for Mr. Lorham. And Mr. Lorham was a teacher for eight years and has been an AP for three years. So, here's the way that we would do that calculation previously. So, if you look at the knoxschools.org backslash HR, and you go to the 20, the FY '24 pay schedule, you'll see a, a pretty substantial book, and it'll have a lot of different scales in it, and the first thing that you'll see when you turn that page will be the teacher scale. So, for example, Mr. Lorham there would be on step eight of the master scale. So, we would look at that master scale, which was on a 200-day contract, and that's what it would reflect. We would take step eight, we would divide it by 200, well, APs are on a 221-day contract, so we'd multiply it by 221. Then, what we would look at, because this is the third year that Mr. Lorham has been an assistant principal, we would go to the appropriate step on the master's admin supplement, so depending on if it was elementary, middle, or high, would be a different value, and we would take that because that was reflected in 200 days, we would divide it by 200 days and multiply it by 221, and the sum of those two numbers would be Mr. Lorham's annual salary. So, with this process, what we have done, if you look at the difference now, the grade band for Mr. Lorham would be 126. If this is his third year, then you would look over at step three, and that would be the position that he would find himself in. We would look also to determine about his salary, but that is an oversimplification of the process, and the, and so that everybody can see that that particular position falls at market value. Here's a few more examples when we're looking, and just something to think about, these were examples that we used. We use the Google form to try to identify certain trends. If we saw multiple responses that were saying the same thing, we looked into it and to determine was the, the data that we had, was it, was it good data, are there trends in the data? So, here's an example, we've got Ms. Ipsom, and she was a secretary at KCS for 11 years at the end of 20, of 24. Before, she was on step 11 of the admin, of the administrative secretary scale. Now, when the transition happened and the first notice she got, she was on step eight. Well, that's not correct. This is an error, and she was corrected to step 11, and if this is the case, those folks should immediately trend, to reach out to HR, and we're continuously going through our data to make sure that we could do compares to catch as many as we can, even those that submitted and those that didn't submit. So, that was a, an example there. Let's look at Mr. Delor. I was a custodian for 18 years at the end of FY '24, and as you know, the custodian scale was topped out at step 14 previously. So, now, our custodian scale is expanded out to step 20, so Mr. Delor will find himself on step 18. This is correct, he's in the correct spot. So, as you look at some of those job classes, and I'll just, I'll say this in just a minute when we look at those slides, but it's important for me to say this as we're here, you'll see in those job classes that expanded from 14 to 20, they probably, they probably got the largest increase on that because you had, we have a number of employees that have been with us a long, long time that get the benefit of those additional steps in addition to their grade band moving to market value. Finally, let's look at Ms. Emmett. Ms. Emmett is a speech-language pathologist for KCS for 14 years at the end of FY '24, so she was on step 14 previously, and then as they transitioned to that, she would transition to step 14. This is also correct. Another lesson that we learned is communication is critical. Communication is critical. We knew that going into it, but as we were, were going through the process, we, we realized that that was an area where we could, we should have done better, we should have staffed for it better, but, but we had this competing narrative of making sure people got paid in the paycheck to make sure everything was correct on the backend. One of the things, as I went through the process, the Google form became very difficult to manage. We should have had greater hindsight onto how that we could group those more easily into areas where we could address those on a much easier basis, a little less free response, have an opportunity for free response, but also anticipated what the potential issues would have been, and that would have been something that I would have definitely done differently from the get-go. We would have benefited greatly, our department would have benefited gratefully if we would have had the opportunity to increase manpower. Hiring season is our peak season, it's our busiest time of year, and we process a lot of transitions during that time of year, so it was less than ideal for us to take on this task. So, that limited our capacity in terms of reaching out and the things that we wanted to do. Another thing hindsight, when I was looking through and reflecting, is the fact that I really wish that we had had more people involved from the initial phase, and even from the, the consideration, so that there was more people than just the HR department and, and, and being involved from the get-go when we, when we started the process, from what did the files look like going in, what did the files look like coming out, and had a larger group. It sure would have cut down on the transfer of knowledge at that point in time if there were more people involved from the beginning. And then, again, we should have more broadly communicated that certain job classes were already closer to market value than others, and I think that would, we would have benefited greatly from that. So, as we look at these, these are some, some lessons that we've learned and some changes that we've made. We have expanded the implementation beyond just HR to include some additional departments inside of business and talent to increase capacity, and that has been proven a benefit to try to make sure that we hit those, those important dates. And another thing that we've started doing is establishing some progressive communication opportunities to kind of further address those concerns. We submitted a, a, a second Google form that kind of allowed for us to shepherd those things more appropriately and address those concerns more readily, or in, in, in the, the middle of July at some point in time, and that's kind of helped us look at those specific issues, and you can kind of see the, the spread of what those concerns are. We also started going with individual phone calls to respondents to the greatest extent we can. As you can imagine, some of those phone calls have been in excess of 30 minutes, and we want to make sure that people's heard. And the, the downside of this whole system, I will say, the whole implementation, I feel very comfortable about when the paychecks start rolling out on August the 22nd, but the one thing that I'm very disappointed at is the impersonal nature it appears to a lot of people that it's come across, and we want to address that, we want to be able to, to deal with that. August the 10th is a big date for us. August the 5th is our payroll deadline, and in August the 10th, we want to make sure that we have, we, we've got to have all of our payroll things ready to run so we can start running edits and get the payroll paid. After August the 10th, I'm going to set up, well, I have set up, I've set up a bookings link, a teams booking link that will be submitted to all people that have responded to the Google form, that will be in 15-minute increments, that people can respond and we'll give them individual, as I will try to, well, I will be in at least 70 of those a week so that we can respond to as many people as we can, because in that process, that is probably the, well, that is definitely the one part that I, I would like to have an opportunity to do again. And so, again, after August the 10th, that is the plan, to have that bookings link and submitted to our folks to give them an opportunity to schedule time with us there. So, as we're entering a, a phase four, we're, our teachers, we're invested significantly in the teachers and as much as possible in the classroom, and as you know, as they transitioned over to plus one on that step placement, we have received higher-than-expected TISA allocation as well with local sales tax, and so, the recommendation that you all will be looking at, I think it's item 10F on the agenda, will be to grant that same step placement or that, that same plus one to all employees on the general scale that transitioned with us from last year. So, that is a, a great opportunity to treat the general scale exactly the way that, that the teachers were treated. So, I want to give you an example of what that looked like. If you look at this bar graph, this is what it looks like when we're taking up that $41 million investment. 15%, 15.6% custodian pay increase, 23.9, and you can read it, and you can see that in this nice snapshot, we could see that some of our positions were closer to market value than others, that's reflective of that difference. But, that item, if you all approve tomorrow, will move from, again, it's, it's cost value from 41 million to 44.46 million, but it will take 40 of, so, the, our, our employees making 4% or more will go from 87.8% up to 95%, and this is what that will, means to custodian. You're talking about a 2.8% increase on average for custodians, you're talking about a 2.5% increase for school secretaries, you're talking about a 2.4% increase for educational assistance, a 2.3% increase for instructional coaches, a 3.2% increase in our food service department, and a 2.2% increase for our assistant principals. So, this would be, should you all act affirmatively to, well, when next we meet, these will be the appro, the average increases for those job classes at that time. So, these are our next steps. Like I mentioned, the August payroll is our utmost priority.
Ms. Revolt, I'm so sorry, I just noticed there's some lights on, do you all want to answer questions?
On the last slide, just a point of clarification.
Sure, sure.
The red is an additional and on top of what they've already received.
That is correct.
So, the top number would be the total average increase for that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. That's a great, so if you, if you go back to, say, for example, assistant principals right now as is, 4.8% increase. If y'all act affirmatively on 10F on Thursday, that will give them a 2.2% increase, which rounds them up to 7% increase.
Sorry, Ms. Owen, I see your lights on too.
It's been on a while, I can wait.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, what are our next steps? Again, we will continue to pay, work for payroll, we want to make sure, because our number one priority is that people get paid and it's as close to being accurate as possible. We will continue to resolve any remaining questions, concerns, and make those changes as necessary, and provide any of that information when requested, when the requested changes are not appropriate. We're going to continue to work with our compensation committee to monitor the implementation of our salary study recommendations and transition to the new scales. And so, again, pending board action of the item on, 10F on Thursday is what you'll see there. Let me draw this to your attention. Folks that have been paid in July, we will, if you choose to approve that 10F, what we will do is we will retroactively pay those folks that were paid in July, but we're going to be a month behind on that retro pay, and we'll like, it will be in September when that has, when that, that retro pay is made. They will be, we've worked through the implementation to make sure that we, we've got all, all things in order for the August payroll, so that September payroll would also include the retro pay for those should you choose to. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've, I've had well over 100 folks that I've talked to about concerns, and I don't think they're reaching out to me because they like me better, I think it's because they know that I understand their pay scale, because I was here for so long. And the concerns that they have had for the past four months have been very emotional for them. So, I appreciate, Scott, that you have, the way I wrote this down is not how I mean it. I appreciate that you have felt it personally, that you have taken a, a personal initiative to take care of, of people. Not that I want you to feel it personally, but I, I think you have, you have made an extreme effort to work with all of the people that have come to you. On the things learned, I would really like to have seen on the things learned, bringing all of the information to the board on the front end. Had all of this information been formulated in a way that was ready to present to the board on the front end, I think you would have seen a lot of the problems, instead of ending up in the middle of all the problems. That said, I, I have requested that information, I requested it in, I requested it verbally in two meetings, I requested it in writing two months ago, and I asked that it be given to the board, and it has not been given to the board yet. I will be asking a court to help me get that tomorrow. Looking at market value, I think we're going to be having a lot of work to do while we're in phase four. We know that schools in general tend to pay below what a person would make in any other, any other career. So, when we take 20 schools and compare them for market value, we're not comparing the market value of those skills in the greater community. So, I think we have taken, it's a fallacy to look at it that way, because we are not paying market value for what that individual could make with their skills in some other A question I have is, how many total positions do we have right now, approximately?
Approximately, I'm almost afraid to, I think maybe 7,400, but I don't know. We'll, we'll get that in from.
And how many did we have last year?
I tell you what, Ms. Owen, I'm not prepared to say that, so I don't want to.
Okay.
To, to do that.
That's fair. I'm going to say that it was significantly more. So, I think when we look at only the difference in openings, we have to realize that we have fewer openings because we have fewer positions, and I think we need to take that into consideration. And I think we need to take that into consideration when we're looking at all of the data. When we're talking about 702 that have been resolved and 91 that we're still working on, the first time I got a significant piece of the data, I only got half of our employees in the data. So it makes me wonder, if this number is correct at well under 2,000, it makes me wonder why 4,000 were withheld from me. I think there's a fallacy in the formula when we are looking at people who have changed positions. And I want to use a principal as an example. If a principal has been employed with us, they've been a teacher for a while, they've been maybe an AA, then an AP, all of that experience is part of the experience that brings them to be a principal. All of that experience counts when they take that position. If we have a person who had all of that prior experience, maybe they had 15 years of experience before they became a principal, and another person who had five years' experience before they became a principal, but when they become a principal, they're going to be paid the same rate. That does not seem where it should be.
Could I respond to that? Just for clarity, because a lot of people have asked that question. So when you're looking back on, and this is highly technical, so I'll high level it. When you're looking at the transition to that scale, there's a lot of things that went into it. As you recall, it's either their current salary, so their FY24 salary, or their position in the job class. And the reason why I bring that up is because all of those ideas, that all those things that you mentioned are embedded in where they were paid previously. And that was what was used to place them into the scale, either by salary or by time of position. And I'll give you a case in point. To my surprise, we have a number of APs who have been in the position for greater than 20 years. So those folks that were placed into their respective grade bands went all the way to the top of the scale. If we had slotted them by the salary, it would be maybe 13 or 14. So a lot of people have said, I've lost all of my experience or something like, you know, something similar to what you said. But that was what was embedded under their current salary that moved them forward. Now, moving forward, all of those things go in as we look and progress from being a teacher to being an AP to being a what-have-you. All of that is embedded at that base level as a person progresses throughout their, throughout the scales and the general scale.
I get that that is all embedded. But when we take the people who are all embedded and then the people who are coming into it, it is going to be skewed. So, and before I do some very wrong math here on this next part, where does the scale for principals top out? Is it at 20, let's say it's at 20 years, just for conversation.
All general scales stop at 20 years.
Okay. So when we're looking at retirement, if we have a person who is a principal and they have been working with us for 25 years, they are five years from retirement. So if anyone doesn't know this, your five highest paid years make up your retirement amount. That's how it's figured. So let's say if I worked making $20,000 my last five years, but I had made $30,000 the five before that, then it would be the $30,000 that would base my retirement. So if we're looking at a person who's worked with us for 25 years and they are thinking about their five highest paid years, when we come in and put them on a different, on a lower step, basically, than what they would have been otherwise, they may have five years of service left, but they have 10 more years before they would top out. So that's lowering their potential retirement. And it's something that I think maybe folks haven't considered at all.
One thing, could I address that just real quick? And saying that I understand where you're coming from on that, but it does give those folks a progression of five years and an increase as where there's no guarantee of increases from year to year. So that's kind of the thought as you progress through the scale, that that would be the case.
I get that. But then it's going to, while it's a good idea to incentivize people to stay longer, I feel like this is almost forcing them to stay longer. And that's not a position I think people want to be in so that they can optimize their retirement amount in having to work five years longer than they would have, working 35 years instead of 30. So I think that's something that we really need to look at in that phase while we're looking at what to do. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that this is an agenda item on our regular agenda, but it's also come up in the presentation. So I'm just going to ask the question now, because you already got the slides, Andy. Can you go back to the slide that I already asked you the previous question on? Yeah, that one right there. So because we're being asked to vote on the additional 3.4 million, which is basically an 8% increase over the total of the 41 million. So it's an additional 8%. A couple of questions about this. So there's those six different positions. Are those for the purpose of example? Or are those the only six positions that would be affected?
For the purpose of example.
For the purpose of example, okay. And so what would, was this, would this 3.4 million impact every position potentially? Not individuals, not every individual, but every position, or is it going to be only applied to certain positions?
No, all positions.
All positions, okay. I just want to make sure that was the case because if it was limited to these six, I would then would want to know, well, why is it limited to these six and not the other ones? And that may address my second question, which was really the more important one. You said several times, and I understood this, I think, throughout the whole process, that the number one, one of the number one goals of this was to help get positions closer to market value. And so if we're saying we're going to add, don't hear me wrong, I'm not saying I don't want to give people more money, I get that. But if the goal was to get people close to market, and now we're saying, but now we're going to push it even beyond that, are we somehow hurting ourselves in terms of our objective? Again, I understand from an individual standpoint, as an employee, more money is more better, right? I get that. But I'm just thinking from a systematic standpoint, from a system standpoint, are we working against ourselves? And again, I appreciate going in, going in with the willingness to negotiate and kind of think about problem solving and all that. And really appreciate, just what Ms. Owen said too, the talking about the personal nature of this. I mean, every call that's been received and every Google form that's been received, that's what it's about. It's because I'm feeling it right here, right? I mean, that's what it's about, and you all recognize that. I appreciate that. So my question about market value, does this?
It's a great question. And if it's okay, I'm going to go back a few slides because I want to stay right here. This is where we didn't do a good job of defining this. When we talk about market value, we're talking about market value at the grade bands, not necessarily at the steps that are there, right? So I'll give you a case in point. Let's say, for example, and I'm just, these are raw numbers. But let's say I brought over to the scale and I was moved to market value at a, maybe I used miss a ment, for example. That was a move to step 14, and then came on to the new scales at step 14. Well, in that particular, when I look back at that, that was a 7% increase. But with that additional step placement, it gave a 9.6% increase. But it honored, it was the opportunity to honor that step in a similar fashion that we honored the teachers' plus one.
Yeah, so I appreciate that because that's actually where the conversations and the people that have reached out to me, that's actually been the biggest concern. And so what I hear you saying is that this is an opportunity, this resolution that you all are providing for the board to consider, you feel like is the opportunity to address that particular concern?
That is correct.
Fair to say?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. McGorn, I know you have something to add.
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, I think that you just cleared it up, Mr. Watson. I know that Mr. Watson and Mr. Bolton were speaking the same language. But when you said all positions, it's the transition to the cert one and cert two has already been granted, the plus one. So this would be all positions on the general scale.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Watson, were you? I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what's important in what you're asking is that it's also a question of transparency. If the board will go back and look at the video that's online explaining how an employee can determine what their pay will be, it very clearly shows going up one step. And so I think if we are, if we're to be truly transparent, I think what we are being asked to do here is to match what we have said we were going to do.
Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I mean, I know this is a lot of work. Thank you to Ron or whoever had the foresight to pay out down a bunch of debt early so we'd have this. I mean, that was such a, just a genius move, a smart move to have the resources to be able to make this move. Thank you to your team for doing all the work and figuring all this out and continuing to figure it out. Thank you, Scott, for being willing to sit in on 70 15-minute meetings with people who deeply care about their salary. So I just, huge shout out to everyone that put in the work. Frankly, we had the easiest part of it. We just go, oh, we want to give teachers raises, sure. I mean, that was an easy yes for us as a board. And y'all put in the work to figure out the finances and then to figure out the scale and get it all worked out and get it implemented. And so I just want to thank you and Ms. McGorn, the rest of that team. I'm sure there's a whole bunch of people that deserve thanks for it. So thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I echo that, Mr. Triplet. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bolton.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Wilson is going to do a presentation on the early release feedback and next steps. I know several of us have heard, so I appreciate you putting this together and gathering that info.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the board. Actually, Cory's going to help me a little bit with parts of this as well because it was a partnership between the academics division and strategy and REA and doing some surveying around this topic as well. So just to take us back, we've talked about early release days a couple of different times in the course of the last year or two. Just as some reminder of kind of where did this come from, this was originally adopted by the board based on a recommendation from a committee of about 11 principals and then several district office folks that participated in kind of some thinking around this back in May of 2022 is when this was originally approved. And what it originally was slated for was to provide some embedded time for our principals to provide some professional development, professional learning for their staff. That was really time that they didn't currently have in their calendar, in their schedule to utilize. And so this was a way proposed to tackle that as a need. And we did that in a way that was considered to be a pilot for two years. And so we've now reached the end of that two-year pilot. As we've gotten into talking about calendars for the current year and for next year, some questions were raised about continuing to use those days in the way that they've been used. And again, as a reminder, the original thought and proposal included six days that were essentially two-hour early release days built into the calendar. We made that happen in the calendar by using two of our inclement weather days, you may recall, taking this from 10 in a normal year to eight. And so in '22, '23, we were able to follow that full planned calendar of those days using all six. Last year, you may recall that we only used three because we had some unfortunate and unexpected snowfalls that kept us out of school longer than we anticipated. So we were able to reclaim those three days to help build back in some instructional time along the way. So again, goal being and suggested by our principals to provide them with some PD time for their staff and their schools. So based on that, again, as we've talked about calendars, we talked about gathering some feedback from our families and from our teachers and our principals to give us some additional guidance on kind of after two years where we stand. And so Ms. Lawner is going to come and talk to you about that information.
You'll get all the presentations tonight. I will try to go quickly. So if you all recall, we did put out a survey to families, to school staff, and to principals at the tail end of last school year. We were coming up on the closure of that two-year pilot that Dr. Wilson mentioned. And the goal of that survey was really to assess the perspectives of our family members and of our staff members as they relate to primarily the continuation of early release days. To do that, we looked at questions involving the impact of early release days on families, perspectives on what's an appropriate number of early release days to meet those goals, and what's the best use of those early release days. So I want to take a quick moment just to review our findings. And before we dive into those findings, I do want to say this was actually a very well-responded-to survey. Our response rate is better than we generally see for surveys of this kind. Responses from families numbered over 10,000, for school-based staff, a little bit shy of 2,500, and more than half of our principals did respond as well. So I won't get into the actual breakdown of each of those categories, but you can see that on the screen as well, just who is represented in those three stakeholder categories. And so here's what we found. So first and foremost, should we continue early release days? So in response to that question, the answer was largely yes across all three stakeholder groups. And I want to call your attention to the teal slivers of the pie chart there, so that dark teal and the lighter teal. Those are your yes responses. You can see that principals were of the three stakeholder categories the most apt to say yes. We would like to continue early release days. Our families were actually the second most likely stakeholder group to advocate for the continuation of early release days. Our staff also agreed with that continuation, but that was the group that we saw that would like to see more changes in the usage of early release days, should we continue. So again, the orange slivers are your no's, the teals are your yes responses. We also wanted to know, you know, what is the impact on families? This is a change, a departure from our normal schedule, what we've done every year prior to two years ago. So in asking the question, do early release days create any challenges for your families or for your family? Our no responses were in orange, again, so you see about 41% of our respondents said, no, not at all. No, no significant impact to my family. You did see about 60% of our respondents saying, yes, I did face some challenges as they relate to early release days. But only about a quarter of our respondents said that they faced significant challenges. We also asked, what are the challenges that you're confronted with? And so this was something that respondents were able to flag, all that applied. So of all the various categories of challenges, respondents most frequently stated that it was the disruption to routine that was really a challenge to them and to their family, with transportation being the second most highly reported challenge, childcare the third, and that loss of instructional time being the fourth most highly responded, reported challenge. And so we really wanted to ask folks, you know, if it were up to you, how many early release days would we have? Would we stick with our current model? Would we transition to two full days? Would we look at four half-days? Would we have no early release days? Or is this just something you don't have an opinion on? And so what you'll see on the bar chart there is all three stakeholder categories represented. You've got families in blue. Our responses from staff members are in teal. And then you see responses from principals in green. And you also have an average of each of those stakeholder groups as they relate to those response categories in orange. And so what you'll see is that the highest, the most favorable responses really concentrated around two full days. The difference being principals, you know, really preferred that four-half-days opportunity. We can extrapolate and make some guesses as to why, just in terms of the usage of early release days. The four-half-days was the second most popular choice with continuation of our current model being the third most popular choice. We also asked our staff, so our school leaders and our school staff, you know, what would you prefer to see early release days used for? Same breakdown here, teal is staff and green is principals with the orange number being the average across those stakeholder groups. So the most popular usage for early release days was collaboration with colleagues. You can see there's a little bit of discrepancy there though between staff and principal responses. So I'd say kind of the overall, the highest concentration of responses is probably about 73.85%. If you want to pick kind of that average there that best reflects our staff responses for lesson planning and preparation. So that was a lot of information delivered very quickly. So this is kind of the bottom line across all stakeholder groups. On average, this is what we found from our surveys. Respondents tended to agree there would be merit in continuing early release days. Staff and principals, particularly our school-based staff, would like to see changes made in how that time is used. Two full half-days was the most popular choice, followed very closely thereafter by four half-days. Collaboration with colleagues was the most preferred use of early release days, followed by lesson planning and preparation. Impact on families varied. So 41% of families, again, reported no challenges with early release days. But about a quarter of our respondents did report a significant challenge. And so disruption to routine was the most frequently cited of those challenges, followed by transportation. So that was what we witnessed. So that was what we witnessed from the surveys. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Dr. Wilson, to talk a little bit more about what they're going to do with those results.
I'm going to just pause right here. Reverend Butler and Mr. Watson, I know you guys have some questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a question of clarification of, you have a full half-day. What is a full half-day? Between a half-day and a full half-day?
I think in comparison, and Cory, correct me wrong if I'm misspeaking for your slide, but a full half-day being like the traditional, like we'll have a half-day for the first day of school that ends with, let's see, it's a true half-day. The early release days have been a two-hour early release. A traditional full half-day has been something that's been in our calendar for, you know, forever, the early release day. And that schedule was a different schedule coming into the, into the plan.
I'll say, Dr. Wilson, if you'll take us backward in the slides. I think my accent might have led us astray here. So four half-days is what I was going for. So you have two full days and four half-days.
Yeah, four half-days.
Half-days. Sorry, I will enunciate better in the future.
I think your slide is wrong.
I see a slide that says two.
You say two full half-days.
Four half-days.
Two.
Two full half-days.
That should be two full days. Okay.
Two full half-days. So that's what was my question.
Two full days.
So that's a typo.
Yes, that one's a typo.
So either two full days off or.
Or four half-days.
Yes. Thank you, Reverend Butler. We will make that change.
Yep.
I guess that.
I don't know what a full half-day is.
I was working hard to explain it. I thought I had, I thought I knew what it was. But sometimes it's just a typo.
There's a back-to-school work problem right there.
And sometimes I add that confusion, Reverend Butler, so that's fine. All right, so we'll get this back on the rails here. Okay. So based on the, the feedback that we received through the survey, and I'll say just anecdotally too, I think, you know, these are, these are conversations we've had over the last couple of years with our teachers' council, with our family council. We've heard feedback from that, too. Just some things to consider, I think, as we're thinking about what a proper response might be. You know, for the '24, '25 year, obviously, we've got a published calendar. The schools have already begun, principals have begun making their PD plans, which they submit for each year, which certainly include the early release days as part of that plan. Families have made plans for, for providing, you know, transportation, pickup, all the things as they look at the calendar. And then obviously, our aftercare providers have some change in schedule that they have to be equipped for in preparation for these days. The disruption to routine was something that, you know, we heard a lot in the, in the family feedback especially. And there are some ways that we can address that without some significant changes. So as we, as I'll show you an example of that, keep that in mind. And then using our time intentionally, our, our staff and our principals expressed, you know, again, pretty much a positive feeling about it, even though they suggested some changes with that. So modifying how we might use our time could be part of our, our proposed solution as well. And again, can do that without changing the calendar drastically to do that. So again, based on the feedback, based on requests for us to look at this again and to think about some ways that we might make this a, a more, you know, beneficial experience for all the parties that are involved, here is a proposal that we bring for your consideration. There is an, an action item on the agenda this month for discussion and possible decision-making around the early release days. And we feel like, again, based on the feedback we received, this is a, a good solution to, to consider as we think about change to that for this year. So what we would suggest is moving to the four half-day, moving to four half-days, which was one of the options. Those are full half-days, Reverend Butler, if you're wondering. Moving to the half-days was one of the options that we put in there. We would do that by getting rid of or removing the August 16th and the January 22nd early release days from the calendar. August 16th is very early in the school year for our principals and for our teachers. We're just back on, on contract at that point. And then coming back in January, the January 22nd, Wednesday, falls on the same week as the Martin Luther King holiday as well. So that would be being out of school on Monday, back on Tuesday, and out of, and out of half-day or, or a two-hour early release on that January 22nd. So just to kind of give you some context around those two days. We can do that by continuing to utilize the two stockpile days that we currently use. So because we were doing that two-hour early release, we could use two days to earn six days because this would be a true half-day. We can, we can do that by still utilizing those same two stockpile days, no change in terms of that number of snow days and all of those things. Structure is another thing to think about. So again, this would actually end up moving us to a place where we have three full hours for that time for our, for our staff to work. And I'll say anecdotally again, one of the things early on, and I think there was some communication on that, that misled, I think, some of our teaching staff, was that they were, they were requesting and asking for more independent time to, to work on classroom tasks and maybe grading and planning on their own, that they would like to bake into, to this process. And it really was truly designed for some principal-led collaborative activities, things like that in the building. And so as we think about expanding that time for the, for the day, for that true half-day, we would suggest a structure that, that allows for the principal to continue with about two hours of planned activities, which can be more professional learning, data analysis, collaboration, maybe extension of PLCs, things like that. But then also bake into that time an hour for independent teacher planning, application and classroom tasks. Another thing we heard through our, our teacher councils a year ago, I can say specifically, was, you know, when we're doing all of this new learning, sometimes the, the opportunity to transfer that back to my classroom, to take it and do something with it that allows me to apply it, I don't have the time to do that or the opportunity. So again, an opportunity to, to think differently about the structure and to answer to that need that we have heard over time. So we feel like this proposal does minimize some of that disruption to routine. We moved from six days that families would be having to plan for to four, and we moved to a schedule that they're a little more familiar with in the regular flow of a school year, that half-day schedule. It minimizes the changes that may already, for the plans that already may be in place for these. You know, principals would have some shuffling around to do, but could, could figure out ways to modify the plan to accommodate for the, for the two days per semester rather than the three. It still has the embedded opportunities throughout the year. And so taking you back to the, to the feedback, if you notice with the principals, their, their response on the two full days for the year was fairly low. Again, my conjecture, but again, knowing where this came from, this idea of being able to build those opportunities in over time throughout the year so that you can be responsive to data that comes back, so that you can be adjusting as you need to with some of those plans. If you just have those two full-day opportunities, it limits that a bit. So that's just a, some conjecture on my part around maybe what that, what that data was coming from. It provides added time for collaboration, lesson planning, individual teacher needs, so baking that in for the teachers to have some individual decision-making in that. It does not cost us any additional inclement weather days, as I mentioned already, for that plan. So next steps, again, there is an agenda item for this month for you guys to consider this proposal or other actions. It's a decision and possible discussion. And so an, an opportunity for you guys to potentially to revise the schedule. Again, just to remind you, that would be dropping that first day for each semester if we talked about the '24, '25 school year. And again, coming off the pilot, it's probably good time to think about changes to how we do it and how often we do it. And then would give us this year, suggestion, monitor to, to see if we're moving closer to the target that we want, potentially surveying staff and families and things again through the course of this year, and then making the necessary changes to the '25, '26 calendar in the spring based on some of that feedback. So what questions do you have?
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just a couple of questions. Just, obviously, you all dug into the analysis of the data much more than I have, but, so I'm just kind of riffing here a little bit. So on the slide that talks about continuing of early release days and the findings, it says that 48.9% said to keep it, basically, of families. But then when we look at, what slide is it? It's the one, whether or not they face challenges or not. That's only, there's only a 7% difference there. So that stands out to me that only 7% of folks, I, there's no way to know if it's the same people responding, right, obviously. But you would assume if you're facing challenges, you're probably not one of the yeses, right? But 7% of them were, right? So 7% of the families who face some kind of challenges had to also say yes to get to that percentage, right? Which, so, so to me, that's telling, is that it seems like the majority of people who face challenges also are saying likely, don't keep doing it. Have no way of knowing exactly if it's the same people, right? Also then, when you look at preference in terms of release days, in terms of the way we do it, the option that you're proposing is the one that's least exciting to families, which is four half-days. And I would think the reason that probably is is because one of the things they're talking about is disruption. And so four half-days, I think what they're saying is it's a lot harder to plan for than two full days, like if I just know my kids are going off and doing something else. So I, I appreciate the analysis and all the work. And I know there's lots of ways to read it, and I know there's lots of ways to kind of create a proposal. I mean, to me, I, I think we need to be really conscious about the impact on families. I'm glad we've asked them. I, I mean, to me, I would, I don't even know that I would have brought up what I just said if, if the proposal was two full days. But it seems like to me it's a very close percentage of, families are facing problems. Also, that's close to the same percentage of ones that are like, get rid of it, makes sense, right? Like, I got lots of problems with it, I don't want you to do it. But if you're going to ask me how you want me to, how you, if you're going to ask me how I think you should do it, I'm going to give you a response, but then you're going to choose the one I like the least. That's the way I read the data. And again, I'm, please don't get me wrong, this is not about pointing, pointing fingers. I know you can carve this stuff lots of different ways, but that's my quick read of the data.
Yeah, I think my only response would be yes. I mean, obviously, in making a decision around the model, it is the one that was least favorable with parents. And matter of fact, I mean, over the current model, there's, there's the six days of, of asking them to, you know, have transportation, all those things that was, was voted as a more favorable. That all being said, at the end of the day, too, like, you know, utilization of the days, how they're meant to impact, I guess, the overall development and program at the school is certainly a part of the formula, I mean, as we think about why we do those days. But back to your point, want to be very conscious of how it impacts all stakeholders when we think about meeting that goal.
Yeah, and, and I get from a staff perspective, whether it's staff or principals, why having more of them throughout the year is better because you can spread it out instead of trying to get a lot of bang for your buck in one setting. I totally get that from a, from a staffing standpoint. But our core constituency is our families. So, yeah.
I would also say that, sorry, if I can chime in or not, but if I could chime in, I would also just say that this is part of what makes kind of a static survey really imperfect in that we're capturing a lot of information that is contingent on what-ifs. And so one of the challenges with this particular distribution of feedback is that we don't know yet, when families are weighing in on this, whether or not we're continuing early release days. And so, I mean, yes, to your point, we could dig a little bit more deeply and we'd be happy to do that if that would help, just in terms of, you know, which respondents made up which of these categories. But yeah, the, the deeper we dug, the, the less relevant those kind of parceled-out pieces of information seemed to become because families were balancing so many different variables and so were our staff when they were taking this survey.
Ms. Pike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first just want to say thank you for being innovative and trying something new to see if it works. I, I've definitely heard a lot from families that are, of course, not happy because that's usually what you hear, and teachers. And I really appreciate the data that you presented with us, this presentation and all the work that you've done for this. I'm also curious about that, the four half-days and the families, and I'm really curious if, if they understood that that half-day would be the same as the other half-days that, in that? And that if they were given the choice between just the two full days and the four half-days, what they would choose? Because it's so hard to know, are those four, the families that answered for the four half, like, so low on the four half-days, like, is that the sample that this is a, an extreme circumstance, you know, for them or puts them in a hardship? Or are those families that were just clicking through and that were like, ah, I'd rather have two full days, you know? It's so hard to know. But I, I am probably between those two choices. And certainly speaking as a mom and planning and things like that, and thinking about how I receive my kids when they come home from the early release days versus even a half-day or a regular school day, I would prefer one of those, so. And that's what I generally hear from other families. So thank you for this.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. From a staff retention perspective, I think it's really important to notice that only 26.5% of our staff are pleased with early release days as they are. And comparing those same numbers, 73.5% would either not have them or yes with changes, and that aligns with the 73.85% that want lesson planning and preparation. When this was first presented to us, if board members remember, it was presented to us as time for teachers to plan and prepare. And at that time, we all said that if it was for teachers to plan and prepare, we supported it. But if it was going to be a bunch of other stuff pushing into their planning time, that we didn't support it. So if we are going to have early release time, we need to make it useful to our staff. Otherwise, I, I think we are really shooting ourselves in the foot. Thank you.
Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank you for all the work going in to taking a look at this. Two issues. One is the full day is synonymous with teacher's work day. Is that the same thing?
So this would be an addition. Essentially, it would be a school-based, I guess you would call it in-service day. By, by state's rule, that's how we would classify it as.
So it's a day that, so, because the, this is preferred use of early re-release days, but one of the choices is not an early release day, but just a full day.
Sure.
And the second thing, and, and, and that's something that I have heard from parents and I heard from a particular grandparent who picked up a grandson from middle school. He much prefers full days than half-days. I can tell you, he personally feels that way.
I'm certain. I got one of those, too.
Yeah. So the second thing is, is using time intentionally, slide. One of the things that I heard was, once again, that the staff prepared time to prepare and that there was a feeling that, and I'm not throwing stones at anyone, but there was a feeling that a lot of times the administration was, it was just, we have to do something, so let's see what we're going to do. And, and you really haven't looked at what was the significance, what improvement, what, what was the gain of having that training that way on that day? What did it do for us? How did we, how did we measure that it was effective? They can, obviously, staff who have time to prepare, they have their own way of measuring their, their significance. But that's the issue of when you have, particularly you have the two hours, you have to be very intentional to get significance out of two hours. So that's, that's one of the reasons why a full day, to me, seems like it's more effective than three hours, one hour to prepare and two hours for you to have something, significance for everyone to come together. That just seems like that's a, that's a hard task.
Yeah, and I'll say, I mean, again, as a two-year pilot, we've had the chance to do this nine times in two years. I think that's, that's a significant factor in that. After year one, we heard feedback similar to what you're, you're labeling. I think we gave additional clarifying guidance to our, our principals. We've tried to really leverage our school improvement plans that we've been developing to be a factor in how we're thinking about that professional development plan and how we're developing that over the course of the year. Not a perfect system, and certainly, you know, user results may vary across the district, I'm certain. But again, it's, it's a new effort. I think that when it was brought to the board originally, however it was presented, it was brought as an innovative solution to a, an issue that schools had faced over time. And it's likely we have not gotten that perfect yet in, in that time. So part of why we're bringing this proposal and for you guys, you guys to consider, I think, all the points that you're making are, are points to consider in, in what, what we decided to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, I would just challenge Cory. Yeah, you're the queen of all the data, so to dive into that a little bit. I mean, I'd hate to be, I'd hate to choose the one that 91 principals liked, but the families of 60,000 students didn't like, you know? I mean, that, that would not look like we're listening to the families, I guess, would be the, be the question. So I know data can, can be cut up in other, number of different ways, and I don't know that I can speak into what the best solution is, but, and I think there's some value, obviously, in the early release days, whatever variation we do choose. But just, I'd hate it for it to look like, hey, we took the survey, all the families hated it, but eh, we're going to do it anyway. So I'd say for that kind of response or that thought to be out there, so.
Any other questions or discussion? Well, I appreciate you guys taking this on. I know we've talked about it, we talked about it in the set meeting, how, you know, you have a pilot program with great intentions, and, you know, you're into it, what does that look like? What worked? What didn't work? How can we tweak it? What can we do better? What is working? So, I appreciate you diving into that and then bringing us these solutions as well so that we can provide these for our step-in family. So, thank you for that. All right. Dr. Adams, we have a lot going on tonight, a lot of good stuff. Custodial staffing update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, currently, we have 43 openings, 59 schools are fully staffed, two high schools are at 50%, 20 of our schools have less than 25%, and we have 11 schools that are at 35% or less. I will say, we have about 10 custodians that are right now in the hopper for the screening process, so very excited about that. I'd also like to give a shout out to Ms. Hamelgarn and her team. I think everyone on the board knows that the work they've done is incredible. And I would also like to add our school nutrition. We were at 50, around 50 vacancies, back-to-back years, stepping in this position, that was a big concern of mine, and we are now at 15 vacancies. So, Brett Foster has worked very closely with our HR department, but they have done an incredible job. And anything that needed to be corrected, they have corrected. I've been to multiple schools and had individual conversations with our custodians, and they seem to be very happy.
Oh, good. That's good to hear.
Thank you.
They work so hard. Mr. Triplet, legislative update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dupler, Chief of Staff Christie Woods, myself, and a couple other board members attended the TSBA Summer Law Institute and gave us a good presentation, a very thorough presentation on all of the legal changes, legal happenings that came out of the last legislative session. I know Mr. Dupler and the staff are working to take some of that and convert that into policy. So, I look forward to seeing all that on August 16th. That meeting is at 10:00 a.m. in the community room here in this building, but I look forward to kind of seeing the end results of that.
Cool. Ms. Christie, Strategic Plan Committee update.
It's a very short report. I'm happy to report it's a short report. The Strategic Plan Committee will meet again on Wednesday, August 14th at 9:00 a.m. with representatives from Lon Chicago to finalize the stakeholder engagement surveys that will be distributed to students, families, staff, community members, and representatives on September 3rd. And also, board members, earlier this year, as a committee, we had expressed our desire to use outside vendors for the community engagement and the strategic planning pieces. So, just to note that the contract resulting from the RFP for strategic planning is on our August 8th meeting agenda for your consideration, and of course, we can discuss that more tonight when we get to that, Adam.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Christie. All right. We will now move into our regular agenda. What's up? Yeah, does anybody need a break? Y'all want a break? Why don't we do a five-minute break for everybody, and then we'll be back in here at, well, how about 6:40? 10 minutes?
We have a library update.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We want to do that.
I mean, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot about that. Library update. Yeah, and then we'll have 10 minutes. You got 6:40 and 2 minutes. Sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so, while the library policy discussions and changes probably seems very top of mind, and we've been talking about it all summer, our librarians returned last week on Thursday, and for many of them, that was kind of their first return back to the schools. On Friday, they were in service with our library supervisor, Ms. Searls, and I actually went out and joined that conversation on Friday. So, that was their first time together as a department, and quite honestly, for a lot of them, the first time they got an update on the full breadth of the law change around the Age Appropriate Materials Act and some of our changed policies and procedures that we've worked through over the summer. So, Sarah and her team met with that group on Friday and discussed the changes in the law, implications in terms of our own policies and procedures and things that that was going to mean for them in terms of their library collections and just really workflow in general in their libraries as they're opening school and thinking about running their libraries as they would in any other year. So, that was kind of their first touch point, and during the in-service, they spent time, actually, with texts that they brought as examples, learning kind of a process of going through and reviewing their texts. And Sarah and her team helped them with practicing and collaborating around taking the new requirements in the law and starting to vet through some titles and look for examples of compliance and non-compliance in the titles that they were looking at. As a walk away, again, and I'll lean back into something that Dr. Rice mentioned earlier on in this discussion around policy, is that we are not going to be able to start the year 100% in compliance with the new law. We can begin the process of building out our procedures and our steps to move towards compliance, and that's really where we left off with librarians on Friday, was to begin a process of them going back and to start reviewing the titles in their collection and start doing some cataloging and identifying of books that may not be in compliance with the new law. And from that point, they're going to work in concert with the library team to begin to take those individual lists that they're going to begin to create and then have a consolidation process kind of each quarter to bring those titles back for some collective voice to think through which titles we're seeing as being non-compliant, that would potentially need to be removed from the library, because we want to make those decisions with consistency across the district and not have individual librarians responsible for making decisions about titles by themselves. So, that is, that's where we left off for the beginning of the process and would expect a quarterly sort of check-in with the library departments to help them consolidate those decisions.
Awesome. Any questions? All right. Okay, a few people have requested a break, so let's take a 10-minute break. 6:50, not 6:40. We'll be back here at 6:50. We'll be back here at 6:50. Other session agenda. Do we have any questions or comments on six, C, one, two, or three? Four or five? Six or seven? Eight or nine? Ten or 11? Twelve, or Ms. Owen?
Thirteen, actually.
Okay, yeah, or 13?
Thank you. This is approving a memorandum of understanding with Teach for America. I would really like to see us not have anything to do with Teach for America. This is seriously concerning to me. This is something that I know our board has worked for a long time to be sure that we were not involved with Teach for America. So I'd really like to see this reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. 14? 15 or 16? 17 or 18? 19 or 20? And we'll see, 21 has been withdrawn. It wasn't quite ready for the agenda, so that item has been taken off. 22 or 23? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can somebody talk to us about why there's transcript services for Farragut? Is that, is that different than other schools?
Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, my understanding of the transcript service is it just is a service they buy into so that when people are looking for proof of high school graduation or records, that it's kind of centralizes those requests and service provision.
Okay, but it's only for Farragut?
This request is for Farragut High School.
Thank you.
24 or 25? 26 or 27? Moving on into board policies. We don't have the entire alphabet tonight, so A or B? It's a pleasant change. Moving on to grants. A or B? C or D? E or F? Okay, then, moving on to contracts. Nine, A. And this is the work that Dr. Brown did speak about earlier in the announcements. B or C? D or E? Or F? All right, moving on to regular agenda items. A has been withdrawn, so B or C? D, I know we did have discussion earlier on that item. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we've had a differentiated pay plan for many, many years, for at least as long as I've been on the board. But I'm curious if there's been any adjustments to the plan because of the most recent work that we've done around the salary schedule and all the adjustments that were made there.
Ms. Hamilgaran?
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson. There, as a result of the salary schedule transition, there was not an adjustment to the differentiated pay plan because it's just our new salary schedules. So this looks largely similar to what you all approved last year as well. What you'll notice is missing from here is the staff referral bonus. So if that pilot continues into something that we do year over year, that would be added in next year.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions on E or F? All right, seeing, oh, Ms. Owen?
Sorry, I'm trying to look at which one of these is adding the step. I want to be sure I understand that, are we adding a step in addition to wherever they are now? Or are we adding a step to wherever they were last year?
Madam Chair, Ms. Owen, adding a step to their placement, the placement they received a salary notification for on the new scales.
Okay, so if they have, if they've gone through the Google form and they've been changed, it's still an additional step?
Yes.
Is that going to be an issue when we have new employees who are coming in? It makes me wonder, if we have someone who is at step seven and they've been teaching or working six years, and then we have someone new come in and they haven't had that bump, then it's going to be a disparity between their pay and their experience.
That's a, that's a good point. And we should have added the caveat that employees that were with us for the 23, 24 school year, it's a plus-one. So the employees that are new to the district that we've hired since July 1, that have just started, that are not transitioning from the old scale to the new scale, they would be placed according to the experience that they bring into the district. This is granting the plus-one on the new general scale for employees that transitioned from the old scales because the general scale employees were not granted a plus-one when they came over as the certified one and certified two scales were.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to public forum. I don't think we have anyone signed up tonight. All right, moving on to board forum. Sophia?
I just want to say good luck to all the freshmen tomorrow. And if there's anything I could tell you, being a senior right now, is get involved in your school. I wouldn't say getting as involved as I am because I have like 10 clubs I'm doing. But definitely get involved because you're going to blink and you're going to be a senior. So definitely have fun while you can. And I wanted to bring up something I already discussed with Mr. Triplett. Adrian Burnett is flooding right now, or it was flooded. One of the wings got flooded because the roof wasn't sealed properly, and there were multiple teachers that contacted me about that. So that's all. Thank you.
Dr. Adams?
I did want to, Madam Chair, I did want to respond to Sophia. So Mr. Triplett checked with the principal about that, and it was, it was a roof leak. She confirmed it was not a flood issue, but we are going to look into that with the contractor. Thank you.
Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm excited about the school year. District One have several new executive principals and teams that are going in. So we're excited for them and praying and encouraging community and families and students to be excited as well as staff.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know there's no board forum on the agenda, which is typical for the regular meeting. And so I think this is my last opportunity to publicly state how much I've appreciated serving over the last four years. Certainly have learned a ton. I think it grew me more than I grew the district. So love the way things are getting left, too. Really excited for the future and still have very much vested. Sophia, you're speaking to my son. He's going to be a freshman at West this year. So very much vested in the work that's continuing to happen. So it's an honor to work with each of you. And you all have stretched me in a lot of ways, and hopefully I've been able to do the same. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Mr. Triplett?
Yeah, I just would like to thank Ms. Horn, even though she's not here. And Ms. Owen, Mr. Watson, appreciate their service. And also want to recognize Dr. Wilson for wearing a tie, trying to dress up as good as Dr. Adams. I think that's an impressive move, looking sharp today. I'm very impressed. Looked better than the superintendent and a couple of other guys out here, so appreciate it. Looks good.
Oh, my gosh. Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie?
Yes, I just want to thank Dr. Reiswick and our law enforcement partners and Chief Pear Yard and everyone that came out today to just reassure parents and staff that we prioritize student and staff's safety and the safety of their campuses. So that was a great way to kick off the school year, I think.
And I just wanted to say my thoughts and prayers are with our students and staff and families as they head back to school this week. And I know my own kids wish we had a longer summer break, but we're ready and excited to start. And I'm looking forward to tomorrow morning. We're doing the ribbon cutting at Mill Creek Elementary. Last year, it opened up K through second, but this year, it will fully open up for K through five. So I'm excited to see everybody out there tomorrow morning for that. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.